Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 31st, 2022 work session for the Southampton Village. I'd like to welcome Alex Wallach is a new staff member in the building department. And I haven't met Alex yet, so happy to meet you virtually here tonight and encourage everybody to reach out to him by email or if in person someday because he's going to be an important part of the team moving forward. So why don't we just jump right in? This is, I just want to remind the board members that this is a work session. So this is your opportunity to ask a lot of questions. Hi Jane, welcome. Please unmute yourself. Alright, so let's jump right in with the subdivision application for 550 and 554 Hill Street LP. There's history here. Needless to say, Kathy was kind enough to forward us as much information as we have, but I think I experienced a little bit of this application when I first came on to the board and Jane and Alan were here for the full duration of it until it went to extension. So it's back in front of us. Kathy, I think I'm going to just ask you to give a brief summary description of what it is because Lisa, I know she's done quite a bit of homework, but and Willa is probably has no idea what this is all about. So maybe just a quick description and then we can go into questions.
Okay, alright, so this was before the planning board originally in 2013. They originally requested a subdivision of four lots to convert two existing tax lots, one having the dispatch pre-existing non-conforming industrial use on property and a house, and then the other lot had as a house into four lots. It was amended very soon after that. Hello, Alan, we have somebody, Alan joined us. You're on mute, Alan.
It's okay, you can continue, Alan can figure.
Anyway, this went through an extensive review as a sketch plan in the sketch plan phase. It went through a full review under the state environmental quality review act. It did require variances from the zoning board of appeals and it did receive those variances. And I sent that copy of the zoning board's determination to all. It was quite extensive. It was a 20-page decision. And it approved the three, the variances required to allow the planning board to consider approval of the sketch plan for three lots that were undersized and required other variances. It also, one thing I should note is that there was concern about the driveway leading from Captain's Neck Lane. And because of a changing grade and also some drainage potential for some drainage problems that that would require a full road plan as part of the sketch plan, as part of the final application. So that actually has been submitted. There was also requirements for a landscape plan and there were other other conditions of that approval. We have not made our way through all of the plans at this point. In fact, the drainage plan, the the roadway plan, I need to refer to our engineers for review. And so we're not ready to report on, you know, whether this is a complete application at this stage. So I actually reached out to the applicant to, you know, let them know that I would be asking them to request an adjournment so that way it would not, it would not need to be on for next Monday's meeting. I don't want to waste anybody's time discussing this, you know, have the, you know, people come to meetings when we're not ready to really discuss it. So so actually they, David Gil Martin should be here and and could, you know, formally request that. Jeff, did I miss anything? Jeff, Jeff is the counsel on this application for the planning board?
Yes, Alice had a conflict. Just two things if I can't, I thought the attorney was John Bennett as opposed to David Gil Martin.
Yes, it is John Bennett. Alright, thank you.
Yes, and the only point I'd make, there had been a question raised when it went before the Board of Zoning Appeals about two proposed guest houses. And that particular request was not granted by the Board of Zoning.
Well, Jeff, two guest houses as?
The applicant had been seeking in their proposal to include in addition to residences, guest houses on two of the three properties and the Board of Zoning Appeals did not grant those requested variances.
Okay, so it would be a primary residence with a guest house if they, if that had gone through?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that. Okay. So any questions from the other board members?
Yeah, I guess in terms of the history of this, I was wondering what the original driveways were to the commercial property, especially the the one that's now lot number three. And then if two flag lots basically were created on this one parcel, why didn't they keep the original road from Hill Street for the three lots then instead of creating an additional road or driveway over the other property? Because now you seem to be, there seem to be in the plan, two different driveways, one going over an existing property by way of, I don't know what that is, a right of way, or is it a easement? And is that something that transfers to whoever buys the property in writing? And is that something that appears in the village code or is, you know, why did they go that route instead of maintaining one driveway if there was one driveway?
So I can't speak for the applicant. This was their proposal. I do know that there were concerns originally and I have to go back to my notes, but I believe that if they were to have a driveway extending from Hill Street to the third lot in the back, it would be rather long. I think it was more than 500 feet. But it really, this is what the applicant had proposed as their, as their plan. So, and it was approved by the zoning board of appeals. I'm not sure if there's anything else I can add to that, but maybe, and maybe the applicant, once they are presenting, would answer that question.
Kathy, in your opinion, as a planner, isn't it good to have to divert one property's worth of traffic off of Hill Street and maybe because I just see Hill Street as such an impossible road to kind of enter and exit onto at most times of the day that if I were owning that third lot, I would kind of love to have my driveway off of another road.
I mean, I'm not a traffic engineer. I'd rather not comment on that, really, on this, on this application. It's it's only one additional lot, so. But I didn't feel that the, that the access from Captain's Neck Lane was an impact as long as they could provide it safely and they, and they, and they did the drainage right and that it was an engineered driveway. And of course legally, once they create the easement and has to, you know, once it's filed with the county, it would have to be filed with the county as part of the subdivision map.
Okay. Jeff, I think, I think that, I'm sorry, Willie, did you want to?
No, I guess just my question is, is an easement over your own property to part of your other own property that's not accessible? Is that a legal thing under the village code? Does that mean that anyone can create an easement and a road over their property to another road, to another property? That's not accessible to a road already? Because that just seemed like something that was a lot of impact in terms of asphalt and you know, creating a dry, I didn't even know you could do an easement to part of your own property that's, that you were subdividing, that's not accessible to a road already.
If I understand your question correctly, part of the issue that the Board of Zoning Appeals dealt with was an application for a variance under the code, because normally what would happen is every property has to have frontage on a street. And in this circumstance, because there will be easements used, the sort of flag type properties would not have frontage on a street technically, because they would only have an easement. So they had to request a variance in order to have technically no frontage, but to be reaching the street via an easement. But in answer to another question that you would raise is once the easement is there, that would pass from owner to owner?
Okay, and I just because I'm trying to get up to speed, is that something that the, is in the zoning board of appeals jurisdiction to grant new easements and driveways and roads, or is that, does the planning board have jurisdiction over deciding, you know, egress to properties that are created through a subdivision?
Well, the planning board will look at egress, but they're working with the plan that was permitted, what the Board of Zoning, the Board of Zoning's jurisdiction was on the application made by the applicant based on the the plan that they had previously submitted in which they were saying essentially, at least for part of this, we're not going to have technical frontage, we're going to create easements. And this is what we would like to do as applicants. We're asking you Board of Zoning Appeals to vary the code to allow us to have no legal frontage without the creation of an easement. So we won't own that property. There'll be an easement to it. So we won't have technical frontage, but we would ask for a variance from the code. And that is under the ZBA's jurisdiction and they did grant that.
And just to be clear, that's not under discussion for this board? That's approved?
That was previously approved by ZBA.
Okay.
Alan, if you're trying to add something, you're on mute.
I would note that for and I'm I'm sorry, people are still catching up. This has been a long process. I even joined the board because somebody very involved in this got to be, I think, 96 or seven and willing to retire. So I went on this board just to help Roy. There's been an objection to and still in front of the board as far as I'm concerned, despite council's view that this is past the ZBA. Because the issue has been raised consistently as to whether or not this will be one of I, and I've asked several times as a board member for Nelson Pope to do research, we haven't heard yet, how many easements of this type have ever been granted in the village? Because even if it isn't written in the code for the planning board, there is a decades-long history of always creating flag lots. And the reason being is counsel just said so elegantly and as I think our new member understands, an easement is a different type of legal right by the property in the back for the future, when these properties are no longer owned by the parties that are moving now or buying them. I have a whole series of issues on this one in that what we sent to the ZBA for their approval still had reservations on our part. But it was approved by a majority to go as the plan then was in front of us to the ZBA for approval. Now it's back. The driveway to the south has always been an item of discussion. There is a missing record unbeknownst to anyone as to why, from 12 or 13 years ago. Where an appeal by the now deceased wife doing all the speaking for the applicant here went before the architecture, the architectural review board to get permission to move the house that they were building on Captain's Neck Lane as far to the north in the property as she possibly could. It illuminated the appearance through counsel and in person of my, best I can tell by official recollect, application I made to get the records. The records that were available for that property indicated that everyone objected to there being a road along the south end of the property to create this easement, not a flag lot for any number of reasons. When this went before the ZBA to approve the number of buildings, which went from four to three and went from guest houses as counsel just said, it went from, I think, finally two down to zero instead of three down to zero. There was still a reservation on any road in the back because it may be the only flag lot, much less easement in the village that has an approximately 15 or 16 foot drop from the back of that property to the bottom. That's just to stick it in requires some real, and the planning board used to have application to approve all flag lots. Since this was before us, that has been taken away from the planning board and I believe the code has been amended so that everything to do with the flag pole on the flag lots is now in the realm of the ARB, not us, but I'm sure counsel can tell us what that's all about. That was a change since this went before the ZBA for its appeal. There's still real concern with that. And in the proceeding that took place, and I think it was 13 years ago, all of the videos don't exist. All of the minutes of the planning board and the ARB don't exist. The file has disappeared from the village's records. It cannot be found despite a long search, a search in the basement of the village hall, a search with all the videos that were starting to mean that Charlie Styler was making. The file just simply doesn't exist. However, of the videos that do exist, there was a presentation made at least once that I heard and I gave this, I gotta go find the videos. I thought I gave them to members of the planning board who were then members. The applicant said that would, no road would ever be put back there to get to the back of the building and storage lot. It was a verbal representation. It was not put in writing, but that was one of the things that went before the ARB. The ARB was not granting the relief for the house until the chairman of the ARB resigned in approximately, I will say resigned, ended her term at the end of that June. Her, maybe your term was up, you know, you served for five years or something. Her place was taken by a new member of the ARB. So the vote on just putting the house in with all the assurances that have been made to all of the council, some of the council are still involved, some of the neighbors are still involved. It was approved three to two by the new member becoming the majority. I think it was the first vote that Mr. Highsmith participated in and it caught everyone's attention because this was a real change. That's the only history I have. I tried very hard to get it back to the record. It was introduced in collateral testimony and stuff on the many, 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 many hearings that this application produced over the past 10 years or so. That was one of the objections that I had then. I still think it's important. I may get outvoted, that it's relevant. I don't think there's almost no place in the village you can find, and I researched it that there's not a flag lot. Everything can be overruled, you can get it passed, but we still have to approve it. I think it's bad for both an environmental, and I discussed it with Dave, David Emily at one point about the original, I'll say cartography of the area and the neighborhood. It's actually an extension of a drain off of Halsey Pond, but that goes back 100 years. But on that one point, that was an item of reservation. I have other things that concern me, but I don't think if this is going to be adjourned, we can get into those later.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Jeff, I'm just, I have to be very honest. This is becoming very confusing to me. Like I, I'm not fully understanding what is before us to be approved. Are we just approving what is already approved? And you're muted.
Sorry, that will help. I think that partly I want to go back to what Ms. Eisman said when the meeting opened, which is what's before you to review is the previously approved sketch plan and now the newly submitted application and what Ms. Eisman and her firm, I think, want to review is to see exactly what's been submitted and to then more specifically defined for this board exactly what issues you will be dealing with here. And I, and I think that part of the confusion, and I'm not, I'm not saying that there's any blame here. I'm saying it's just, it's a, it's a large application with a long history. And I think that this will be much more focused after Ms. Eisman and her team have the opportunity to, to complete that review. And I'm just, I just wonder if Ms. Eisman could chime in a bit because I think that's really what, where we are here. I can certainly go through it and, and review again for the prior legal decisions that were made. But I, but I think truly that what's, what has happened is this is before the board now, but I think Kathy Eisman wants to review it and to come up with the sort of delineation of here's what we're looking at for the board members before realistic action can be taken. So I just wonder if maybe Ms. Eisman could chime in a bit on that to see if I phrased it correctly?
That's, that's absolutely right. I don't have anything to add unless, unless anybody needs clarification. Thanks.
Tony, I have larger objection to this as being, we're just going to review the plan that went before the ZBA to approve because we were advised several times and verbally by our then counsel that what we were sending before the ZBA was neither binding on us and that we would get a full review of it later. In the application, he was pretty specific about his views of various points, many of which were, were not answered. And I have always had a long appeal. I've even spoken about it. I've even asked Kathy, who I think is just a star, she's the best. I've even asked her to go stop her own firm. I think when you've got the same advisor advising both of these people, actually at least three, and occasionally leaving to take private clients to the village, that you have a conflict in the duties that rest with the different boards as a result of the history of them and what they're asked to do. So I think we have a far larger view of this plan than this serial long application that's taken place on this with Nelson Pope and Voorhees advising both boards and on some of the issues having differences of opinion that were never, really weren't discussed and I think are really important. This lot is in a zone lot with four streets surrounding it in which the vast, I think, over 90% of the volume of the lot is in two to three acre zoning, not in less than two acres. This is an odd lot which was grandfathered for moving and storage. A business that was terminated approximately 13 years ago ended. It's not been done since. Since then, activity on this lot has been of a different nature. Our counsel before said, you know, you don't want moving vans on Hill Street. Everybody understands that. I even went to the liquidation of the former business and bought some of the stuff I can produce, the checks for what I paid for buying things that were left in storage from a moving and storage business. It moved. Since then, what's been run here is a dispatch area for an electrician, an electrical dispatch and the storage of heavy equipment for the squires and Pearson River, they used to park their honey buckets and big equipment there. It has not been in moving and storage. And I was assured that it was none of our business what was done after the prior use was, was abandoned. It was all approved. That's what counsel told us. We did not find any approval by the ZBA who have to do this, that a change of the use of this lot was required. Maybe storage is university, you can store anything you want there. We, but we asked and we never got an answer. So the consideration for everything that was done was the end of this non-conforming use, which is probably a good idea. This is a, there were a lot of businesses along Hill Street, which are now on Route 39 because of all the changes made in this area in the last 30 or 80 years. So I don't have a problem with that. It's, it's, it's important to get rid of it. But I have, do have a problem with extending small lots at the edge of a area which is the neighboring pieces to this are large acreage and all the way, all the way down to Ox pasture and between Halsey Neck and Captain's Neck Lane. And it's a, it's pretty fundamental change in the zoning of the area that being proposed here. Kathy's told us that since it's minor, not major, we don't have to worry about it. But I think the difference between major and minor here is material. At least that's my personal view, listening to all sorts of people. And I think that access regardless to interior lots is a big deal. On the south side of Hill Street, my research, which I had to do on my own because I could not get an answer from anyone else, there are maybe two used, but probably three with one used flag lots of any type at all in the entire length of Hill Street to the south. There are a number to the north which have caused controversy and everything, but nothing to the south. In order to get around it, I guess, they made the so-called Roscoe development, which has been in the scene of constant turmoil and stress ever since. They cut into the interior area, south of Hill Street between Halsey Neck and First Neck, and it's been constantly redone, but by roads, not even flag lots. So these are the matters when it comes to planning that I think we have to be satisfied with when we approve this. And it was the ZBA just simply picked up zoning views that were those of NPV and find their experts for all of us, but they don't have the burden of decision. They just give us advice when we ask for it. And I sure wish Kathy was on her own and could stick to the last that falls, especially to us instead of the other boards. I was advised that the house we were worried about, which we were told was irrelevant for the environment we made. They went, finally went before the ARB and had agreed that it was turned down. Why they got rid of that while enforcing a house just across the street, which was just as old, I don't know. That's their business. But finally, we had a ruling as opposed to just a letter from somebody saying, well, I know, it's not really that important historically. So now the lot is vacant and it is ready for development.
I think a lot of what you're hashing over with the history of this is very difficult for anyone coming in now because this was going on before I even joined.
You bet it was. It went on before I joined too.
Right, right. So I think a lot of what we're talking about really needs to be articulated so people can understand. There are a number of lots on Hill Street that are small. There are a number of ranch houses on Hill Street and some of them are even on the south side. So I, I do remember this very well and, and I do remember them doing a lot of work on, on this supposed, whether you want to call it easement driveway, whatever it might be. And I know that there's a lot of documentation from the engineers. So I'd really like to see that before we can even begin to start thinking about where we're going with this. I think that needs to be brought back in front of us.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, my question, I read the ZBA decision on this and I understand that they granted the subdivision into, you know, the three lots. But my question was, what was the commercial property using as a driveway initially and was just using one driveway for the three properties considered by the applicant? Would they consider it at this time because it's less impact on the environment on the, you know, whole universe of Southampton Village, which the planning board is charged with maintaining and also approving standard lot and street configurations? So are we saying, am I, is this a standard lot? So are we saying, am I, is this a standard lot configuration to have an, you know, additional road over someone's property? And does that create a precedent and is that what we want to do as a board?
I, I can go back, I can go back and look at some of the, the, the work that was done. Some of these questions may have been hashed in the past and, and I just have to go back because it is a very thick file. And we do need to do some, you know, backtracking, looking, looking at some of the older files. But the subdivision, the sketch plan approval that was approved by the board in 2018 recognized that, you know, although this was a four, a three lot subdivision and by definition considered a minor subdivision, that there was, you know, certain particulars that they wanted extra information. They wanted an engineered, what they called a roadway plan for the new driveway. They wanted a detailed landscape plan. They wanted a stormwater prevention plan. And they wanted IA systems for the new houses. So, I mean, these are all things that the applicant has submitted, I assume, in this pile. And we're going to be looking at those to make sure that they're complete and, and accurate. And then we can report back to you. As far as bringing back whether, you know, the driveway should have been from Hill Street or, you know, a, a single driveway or so forth. I, I don't know that we can go back and, you know, Jeff, maybe you can help me there. Once we have a zoning board determination that runs with the land, you know, is that something that we, we need to, you know, work with? And you're, and you're on mute, yeah?
No, it's two, they're really two separate issues. The zoning board granted something on the application that was before it. So the application they had was for certain variances and they granted those. The, the planning board will be looking at what regardless is the proper layout of the roads and, and of the lots. That being said, I do think it, it makes a lot of sense to go back to look at the history of what was discussed before. Because the, one wouldn't want to reinvent the wheel either and, and see where, what was discussed, what, what issues were taken into account. And I think that, as two members just pointed out, it's probably going to be very helpful to bring that older history back before the board before, so that people can really grapple with this.
So Kathy, how much time do you think you and your team need?
Um, I mean, I know that we at least need till the next work session. So we need, you know, we need a few weeks. And so we may need more. It just depends on the, on the workload of engineers as well, so.
Okay. Um, I, that, I was, that's what I assumed. So I, I just want to, you know, Lisa, do you have anything that you want to add?
Actually, I think a lot of that has been discussed already. So I'm, I'm, you know, all for listening and understanding better the history on this particular case and how it has arrived to be what it is right now so that we're not in fact setting a standard for future development.
And we have time.
Right.
Okay, great. Does everybody feel comfortable moving on? From here?
Mr. Chairman, may I just ask a question? I know that, I think Mr. Bennett was going to be at least listening and I don't know if, if we wouldn't want to just confirm with him that they have no objection to the matter being adjourned over. I know he spoke to Ms. Eisman about it. I'm not saying he would be presenting tonight. I don't know if this board normally does that.
I don't, I don't see any reason for that. Kathy needs time to do her work. So he can object all he wants, but we need time, so.
That, that's perfectly fair.
Okay.
So I, I mean, my understanding was he's in, he's consenting.
Yeah. He had, and he didn't, he actually didn't expect that there would be any, you know, formal action tonight. So, or next week. So if the board then could vote on it, so that way it's part of the record to adjourn it. So it won't be on the agenda for next Monday. That would be helpful.
Okay.
There, just so you do know, he was in the audience and his hand was up, just so you know he was present and he did hear this conversation.
Okay, but I don't want to waste John's time either. We're, we're not ready for him yet. So let's take, take the month to give Kathy and her team the time that they need. And so just, we want to propose, I'll propose that we extend this matter to the next work session. I don't have the date in front of me.
The work session is January 31st.
That's today.
Oh, my goodness. February 28th.
February, February 28th, okay.
Seconded.
Great. Do we, do we need to?
I, I would just ask if, if there could be all in favor?
Hi.
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 Bye.
Great.
With that, the motion carried. And with that, Mr. Chairman, if I could respectfully ask to be excused, I was here for this matter, as was discussed earlier.
Yes, and, and thank you very much for your clarity, Jeff. I really appreciate it because this is a daunting application before us.
Great to have you, Jeff.
I will.
It's a great, a great increase for us. Thank you.
Thanks. What I'll do, Mr. Chairman, is I'll forward my email and contact number to you. I don't have everybody's email addresses and then if people want to reach me, they can in the intro.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Have a good evening, Alan.
You too.
Okay, moving along, the next item on the agenda is an extension request from Old Town Lodge 908 at 40 Main Street.
And that's a carryover from last month that actually was approved.
I know. So it's embarrassingly on the agenda again. Do we have to take any action tonight, Alice?
No.
Okay. So why don't we move into subdivisions, 99 Sanford LLC?
So that's on for a public hearing next, uh, next week? So assuming that everything's properly noticed and the mailing's done, then we can hear from the applicant in any public next week. There's really nothing unless, this is the one that they, they had approved sketch plan that had assumed two residences, but subject to special exception approval by the zoning board of, within an office district. And the zoning board denied that request or denied approval. I don't know if that's the correct word, say denied. And, and so they're, they're coming back to subdivide the property and, and take out the reference to single family homes.
Okay, so Alex, can we, can we ask that you make sure that the postings were done in, in a timely fashion and?
But I officially confirm that.
Sorry?
Are, are you talking about the public hearing notice information?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that if it's going to be on for a public hearing, that it's ready to be on for a public hearing.
Yeah, no, I, I hear you. We usually do. We get the affidavit same day though, so I can't confirm that. Leave them.
All right. Okay, it, does the board want to have any discussion on this tonight? Or you ready to just move to public, everybody fine waiting till a public hearing? Till it comes up on the public hearing?
If, if, if we have to go ahead on, which, which as some of us thought was a really bad decision for the neighbors, that's what we have to do. We're constrained by the law to not have this go back to residential, so I think we have to have the hearing.
Yeah, agreed. Okay.
Right.
The next item is, our, our site, the, the next few items are site plans. 51 Town Lane, I mean Pond Lane, excuse me, which is the Chancery. Eric's House?
And I am recused on this one, so I'm going to turn my camera off and mute myself.
Okay.
So if I can start, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, we have the resolution, the secret determination that will be on at the next meeting. I, I don't know if Pat Clary is here tonight to answer any questions about the negative declaration that he prepared. But if anyone had any questions tonight, I can certainly answer those, but I can, and if I can't answer them, I would, you know, send them over to Pat so that your questions could be answered by the next meeting so we could have our vote.
Pat is not in the audience, just so the board knows.
Okay, and, and Alex, I hate to load up your plate at your first meeting, but we have historically had a hard time in these, the days of Zoom meetings, staying on top of consultants and specialists that have to be at these meetings. So Pat sometimes needs prodding. I don't know that he, it's necessary for him to be here tonight. I'm not saying that he's needed, but we're going to appreciate your help with that moving forward.
It would definitely be great if he was, if he was here for the February 7th meeting.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, from my own knowledge, Pat is a consultant on this project?
Exactly. So Pope is recused from this application. So Pat Clary is acting as the board's planning consultant with respect to this application only.
Understood. Thank you for that.
So Will, Lisa, Jane, anything, anything about this? This is our time. This is a work session. Do you want to discuss before next meeting or? I'm, I'm mainly concerned that Will, or do you feel up to speed?
No, well, if someone at some point, you know, I need a little more information about the process of, you know, picking up the plans or, you know, some of the files came fully, you know, provided, you know, in electronic form. But I need someone to give me more information about that so I could be more comfortable with, you know, asking questions on all of these applications.
Understood. It's, it's been a struggle in the times of COVID and that's one of the reasons why Alex is on board and we're all excited about that. But I think there, I think that the building department could get a, a package together for you. Or do you have access to Village Hall?
Yeah, I, I mean, I can go and pick it, pick it up. I just, you know, some, some of them I did pick up already. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, to know which ones I just can access on my computer or which I have to go over to Village Hall and physically pick up. If someone could just, you know, loop me in on that. Because most of the, you know, most of the, I just want to make sure I, I.
Jackie would be the best person to email and ask, ask her about that. Jackie Allen.
Jackie Allen, okay. Okay, great. So I, I will follow up and make sure that I have everything. But as far as 51 Pond Lane, so it's on for the hearing is the next phase.
Oh, it's on for.
At the next meeting, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. At the next meeting, the board is, is supposed to adopt a secret determination of significance. And Pat Clary had prepared a negative declaration for the board's review. It's, it's a fairly lengthy document. It contains a lot of information about the application. And it's definitely a good idea to review that as soon as you can in case you have any questions about what's in there.
Okay.
And Will, would you, would you, this is Alan McCrone. I'd love to get your email someday.
Oh, sure.
Okay, mine, mine is mcf@mcfd.com.
Okay, and mine is W U L D A at AOL. I'm still using AOL.
Okay.
Don't make fun of me.
W U.
U L D A.
W U.
U L D A at AOL.
W U, thank you.
Sure.
This is no judgment zone, just to, just so you can feel comfortable.
Thank you.
Well, if there's anything you need that's in the, in the building department, feel free to contact myself and Jackie and we'll, we'll work on getting it to the most convenient way we can.
Okay, terrific. All right. So, um, yeah, so neg, neg deck on the last application is what I'm going to be looking for. Great.
Okay, I'm moving right along to 71 Hill Street. I think Kathy, we're waiting for a couple of things. I, I refresh my memory that I, I think that we decided to accept some traffic information that was part of another application.
Not really.
No.
Maybe. So what, what we had asked for, first, we did the lead agency coordination letter based on the board's, you know, requesting us to get this going. And we did that, but regardless, if we couldn't meet a 30-day minimum requirement by, by next week to, to, for the planning board to be the lead agency on this. But that's not going to hold us up. I mean, we just received on, I think it was on Thursday night and updated EAF with supplemental information. I don't know if that was forwarded to the board or if it was just sent to Alice and myself. Maybe Alex has information on that, with 71 Hill Street. It was a revised full environmental assessment form with attachments that addressed some of the questions that we had brought up.
I think it was submitted to the building department.
Okay, okay. So.
Yeah, I'm, I'm checking. I think, I think Kat, I think Jackie might have forward, no, that's PSCG.
Oh, yeah. So P S, P S E G is, had actually responded to our coordination letter saying that they would, you know, they need some additional information about this project, make sure that they can provide service. So it, it's something that the, the applicant would need to address. But as far as review of this, I'm going to try to get it done, reviewed this week, but we still couldn't do anything next week on the SECR. On the site plan, we are nearly complete with a review memo that I hope to get out to you this week, which has some questions and for clarification that I'd love to discuss with you. But it's not ready, you know, again, this is a big application, so we're, you know, working our way through it. And you know, these are, these are items for discussion for revising the site plan and, you know, it's, it's, we're, we're still in the early stages.
Okay. Moving forward, which is good.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, any other questions? Concerns, comments? Um, all right, well, let's move on to 230 Elm Street.
There, I, I don't know if you have a need, but just so you know, the hands are up. Linda and DeeDee's hands are both up for that.
Um. Yes, in this instance, I want to hear what they have to say.
Hi, it's Linda Riley here. Can you all hear me? I just want to say to all of you, so you know what to look for, that we did indeed deliver full sets of the EAF, revised EAF, which responded to some of the comments that Kathy Eisman had gave, given us. And we also submitted a traffic study and drainage calculations and also some sanitary calculations to, in, in a full packet to every board member. So you should all have that either by email or hard copy. I just want to make sure that you know, we did deliver it before that, before, last week.
What's the date on that, Linda?
That we delivered it? We delivered it on?
1/27.
1/27, yep.
It was just in the planning department, I, I mean, in the Village Hall on Friday and it wasn't brought to my attention.
Well, that's, that's the way things are going. Well, that's, that's the way things are going over there lately. I mean, Jackie's been on vacation. Um, it's, it's, there's someone new there. It's, I understand that there's a transition period, but it's. That's we, I'm not surprised. That's why I wanted to raise my hand and say it's there.
Okay.
I can look to that and make sure the board gets that.
That would be great. I really, I really don't have anything more to say at this point. I'm looking forward to seeing Kathy's report. Um, I understand that you're not going to have us be ready for a secret determination next week. But I do look forward to to moving that along. I do understand too that you've gotten. Uh, back from the Suffolk County. Department Planning Commission, excuse me, the Planning Commission, that it's a matter for local determination only. Um, I'm not sure.
Not, not, not on this application. No, we haven't done the referrals yet on this. They, um, they may have said that they did not want to be lead agency. They actually do a letter of not local.
I thought I saw that.
I'll check. Okay, that I would, I would expect that, but. I thought it was just a saying that they would not. You know, want lead agency in this, which is expected.
Okay. Um, I thought, I thought it was more than that, that they found it a matter for local determination only. I'll check that myself for next week.
And then P S E G, you saw the P S E G letter, right?
Yeah, we we have the P S E G letter. We'll respond to it. Um, I just wanted to ask you when actually those letters for coordinating lead agency status were were submitted, were mailed out.
It went out that same week after our planning board meeting, but we wouldn't have been able to make the 30 days, even if we sent them out that day, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it, I mean, we will definitely have the full 30 days by March, so. And it won't hold us up because, I mean, once we're ready, once the planning board's ready to make a determination, you know. Like, they could do it the same day that they accept lead agency if if they're ready, so.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, Linda, did you say that those documents were emailed to the building department as well?
Yes, they were.
Would that have been to Jackie?
Uh, I think DeeDee actually emailed them to the building department. Uh, or her staff did. Hold on a second, let me see if I have the.
DeeDee, you're muted.
Alec, Alex, I can email that to you. I could forward that to you. I have that email.
You got it. Good.
I personally, that's all I wanted to say. Personally, I I brought eight cop, I brought nine copies. One was time stamped in to the buildings department. Simultaneously, it was emailed to all of you to give you as much time as possible. Thank you. And that was traffic, Kathy's responses and a revised EAF.
Right, so hard copies are somewhere in the office and digital is.
Yes.
Available.
Yes.
Okay.
And we can give you more. If you need them.
Okay, well, thank you both. Is there anything else?
No.
Okay. Alright. Thanks, I'm. We're going to ask you to leave and we're, we'll continue on with the meeting. So. Kathy, we're good with all this, right? Okay, great. Um. So the 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 third item under site plan is elegant affairs. 230 Elm Street. I have some notes here.
So I, I do not know if a survey has been submitted as requested at the last meeting.
I haven't seen it.
I have not received anything.
Okay, and we really need that before we can. Move forward with anything.
Or we can schedule a public hearing, yeah.
Yep. Okay. Does, do? Any of the other board members have anything? To add here?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I have a general question on that because I I did look at the site plan that was sent electronically on that, so it it seems to show a large. Area that's almost the whole length of the side of the building that's described as a patio, but I understood from the last conversation that there was, there's no CO for a patio deck thing and that you therefore can't use it as a patio, so. Um, and I know, you know, the lawyer tried to say that our jurisdiction here is limited to the, you know, the new egress that's being provided, but I don't think that's the case since we're generally charged with. The whole, you know, welfare, health, et cetera, of the community, so. If something does not have a CO, you know, how should that be described on a survey and, you know, what is our obligation to make sure that we don't stamp anything that? Would seem to allow something to be used in a way that the building department hasn't granted a CO unless, you know, that were to be changed down the road. I don't think I understand the interaction between the necessarily something not having a CO and how it needs to be either shown on a survey or not, or whether, you know. In some instances, it has to be removed or not, you know, I I need to understand that interplay more.
That's a great question. So I I think the the issue was that, you know, we we looked at the site plan and it didn't seem to match what was actually there. So it's, it's not just whether they're actually using this outdoor area, it's that this, you know, supposed patio doesn't really seem to exist. It looks like there are some other improvements. In that area that don't necessarily lend themselves to being used as a patio, so, you know, when Kathy saw it. She rightly identified that it did seem to match in size what was part of a previous application as a proposed deck. Uh, which was withdrawn, so that is not part of the current application. The current application is in fact just for. Uh, the the accessibility improvements. Um, and the applicant said that, so we just asked that the, that they submit a survey of what's actually there and that the site plan be revised to depict the actual existing improvements, so there, there is no, you know, sort of. Unspoken planning board blessing of something beyond what is is existing at this time.
And Alice, there's the whole issue about the accessibility improvements crossing. Over the threshold and into the interior. Um, that I, if I, if I'm understanding everything correctly, we're being asked to weigh in on. Is that the case still?
About the interior accessibility improvements?
Yes. But.
So as you know, I I did ask for the village attorney to make a determination on that because. Um. Our jurisdiction is is not made by the board. It is made by the building department and the village attorney assisted with providing that determination, and he said that. Our purview is the accessibility, so I guess to the extent that there is some interior. Uh, it's possible that that's within our jurisdiction, but you know, my view would be that it is the exterior. Uh, which is traditionally within our jurisdiction and that, you know, that review is also limited to what the state code requirements are for accessibility.
Okay.
Well said.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, again, clarity. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um. Lisa, Jane. Willa, thank you so much for weighing in on that. Alan, anything you want to add?
No, what what Alice just said is, I think. Precisely rendered. It was very nice to hear.
Yeah. And have you heard anything? I mean, has the, has the village attorney replied?
He gave a determination that, you know, our purview on the application is for accessibility.
Okay. All right. So we're just in, we're in a holding pattern for a little bit until we get that survey.
May, maybe the applicant is here and can tell us when we're going to have a survey, because. In the interest of expediency, it would be good if at our next meeting, we could schedule that public hearing.
And then is, are there any hands up? Sorry?
No, I'm sorry. I didn't know you couldn't hear me. No.
No hands up? Okay. I'm fine with that. I wasn't keen to let that in tonight anyway, so. Um. Let's see, that's, that's the end of our agenda. I I I've been away, so I haven't seen the January 10th meetings. Alan, have you? Or any of the other members had a chance to review them?
They will be sent out tonight, Chair. I'm sorry about that. That was an oversight on my part. I thought I sent them, but I hadn't.
Okay, great. So we'll do them. The next meeting. February 7th. Okay, unless there's any other. Business that the board would like to discuss, we can, we can close this meeting.